2025 in the Skakit Room. I'm going to make a small change in the agenda. We're going to move the report on the children's area computers to after public comment so that a couple of our staff members from the library who are here don't have to stay through the whole meeting. Thank you both for coming. So the first item is public comment. Would anybody like to make a comment? Nothing? Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay to start talking for a couple of minutes about the report. And she might also get some comments from Jamie and Kim in terms of the research that you did. Kim, it'd be helpful maybe if you could do a comment on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Jamie. So I have been in conversation with librarians about the children's computers at the library. There's four computers and they're mostly used by middle schoolers coming in to play video games after school. Some of the behavior has become a little bit inappropriate for the kids' area since the little kids are right there adjacent to the computers. It feels like not the right fit to have the computers in that area any longer. There's, you know, the report is here and I hope that everyone got a chance to read it. There's kind of a lot of information to give. The video games that are being played are not necessarily appropriate for little kids either. And we've worked, I've worked together with the librarians to try to come up with some different options to kind of use the space a little differently and also perhaps to give the middle schoolers another place to maybe play their games or do other activities in the library. They also have their own space upstairs, which is well utilized by middle schoolers after school. And they're there for, you know, maybe upwards of an hour, an hour and a half, maybe two hours, is that that right? After school. And let's see, what else? So some of the issues that have been happening recently, a few things have been stolen from the computer area. People are leaving messes in the area. Language has been not appropriate for little kids. And Kim has really felt the need to babysit these kids, which, you know, they shouldn't need that kind of adult supervision at their age perhaps. And also, it's just not, it's not Kim's job to be babysitting that age group in the library. Yeah, so that is, that's what this report is about. There's, again, lots of information, happy to answer questions. Kim did some really good research on what other libraries on the Cape are doing with computers in the kids' area. The other good point that I wanted to mention is that all of these kids that are coming in have their own computers because they are handed a computer when they get to sixth grade. They're issued a Chromebook. So they don't have the issue of digital inequity at all there. They each have a computer which they can do their homework on. They can probably play some games on, that kind of thing. And also, I just want to say, generally, many, many children have the ability to play games at their home too. Maybe not everybody. But, but that is something that we can kind of, we can talk about, the availability of having that at the library as well.
Do you want to summarize the key thrust would be for the removal of?
Right, so it would be for the removal of those four computers in the children's area and replacing it with perhaps bookshelves, maybe a table, something that would be well utilized in that space. And then perhaps, this is a suggestion that the librarians have to consider and think about, and all of us have to consider and think about, but maybe having a different kind of game system that the middle schoolers might be able to access after school time for a certain amount of time, perhaps in a different area of the library that's more closed, like the Crane Gallery, if that's available during those times. So that would be kind of the give and take of it. And then, yeah, that's, that's about it.
Kim, do you want to talk? Thanks, Lindsay. Kim, do you want to talk just for a little bit about what you found in surveying other libraries?
So we, at first, it was initially just surveying the few libraries around us, what they did, whether or not they had computer access in their children's areas or.
Could you sit in the front seat, please?
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, 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 of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you sitting next to Darcey?
You'll get picked up by the mics too, so that's important.
Is it right here?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Yeah, of course. Sure. Could I actually steal?
A copy.
Sure. My copy was right on my desk. If you didn't grab it. So at first, it was just picking up the information of the libraries around us. And then randomly, I had a meeting with all of the youth service librarians on the Cape. So I had access to everybody's emails. And I just shot an email and I said, "Quick survey. Do you have computers in these areas? Do you have restrictions? Do you have time limits?" Some gave me a quick one-word answer, some gave me a really lengthy response. Everybody was interested in this information. And at the bottom of this, I summarized my answers and I guess, I don't know, I guess I was surprised that out of the 12 libraries that got back to me, four, only four had computers in the children's area. Only four had computers in the young adult areas. Four had Chromebooks available that you could take out. And four had absolutely nothing available to the children. And those four, and again, these answers are not in this. It wasn't like a "but we wish we did," or it was, it was a "and it hasn't been an issue." It was, one of them was, "we got rid of them when there was COVID and there's been no need for them back." Or, "they have access to the adults if they want them, but they never use them." It's been, it was those answers. And then, are there restrictions? By restrictions, I meant restrictions to the types of programs that they can go on, limits to the ratings, I guess, Minecraft, Roblox, all that. In general, it's no. There was one library that did have restrictions. And then, time limits. Three had yes, three had no, three had a if there's need be, like if there's people waiting, yes. And obviously, three, no, because there's no computers. So I think the findings, if I had to say, kind of go with what we're saying, that these are basically computers in the children's area that are not being used by the children. They're being used by the young adults. The kids don't use them because from what I witness, they say, "Mom, Dad, Grandma, Grandpa, can we use the computers?" And they say, "No, we're not here to use the computers. We're at the library." Okay, end of discussion. So it's the young adults who are here without the adult supervision that go on and play the video games. Out of 12 libraries, only four have computers in the young adult room. So why, again, I didn't go into why. Were they there and they were, were they taken away? Were they just never there at all? Is there not a need? All I'm seeing is that only four have them available, and it doesn't seem to be an issue.
Okay.
They're, you know? So, I don't know. I just think they're too close as, maybe stop me if I'm digressing by going off of the sheet, but they're too, much too close proximity to the children's area. And if we do put them in the young adult area, then you're moving that rowdiness up into the room where it's just going to echo and it's going to be, we're going to constantly be shh, shh, shh. So get rid of them. Just get rid of them and offer, like Lindsay said, after school, come and play whatever video game system we have available in the Crane Room amongst other things we're going to offer up to them.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do any adults use those computers?
No, there are signs that say they're for ages 18 and under only.
So if you just got rid of them, could they go use the adult computers?
No.
No. Because those are for adults.
Well, what would happen if we made those for well use? Would you think they would go to the adult section and use the adult computers?
They would probably try, I mean, again, I might be digressing, but we do have a plan to purchase Chromebooks for the kids to use for schoolwork if they need them, which they, they don't, they don't need them. They're not, there is not a single child that uses those computers for schoolwork because they have them for schoolwork. So if we say the adult computers are not for gaming.
Right.
There's no reason for them to go over there.
That sounds true.
Yeah.
I mean, 10 to 15 years ago was a different scenario where people did use those computers for writing papers.
Right.
And it's just really changed since the middle school shifted to offering the Chromebooks.
Right.
I, very interesting findings in terms of the other libraries. I think that it's, it's complex because there's definitely a behavior issue that's going on. Different crop, different behavior, different years, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, Tavi and Kami have had to deal with people wrestling with each other and behaving very badly right after school. So it's a complex issue. And I also think that the other side is the content and the games and how they've proliferated, especially with boys that are seeking, you know, to be able to play these games. And the amount of boys that play video games is a great percentage of boys. And so it's a complex issue. But I do think that they have the means. Many of them are carrying smartphones. It's pretty clear that access has totally changed. I think one question that Lindsay and I were talking about earlier today is if, in fact, the recommendation is for you to purchase something else and have it on a remote card, that you do some research and try and figure out what other libraries do as well, if they do something like that. Or just internet research to try and figure out so that we're not, you know, because that's something that we would probably have to ask for financial assistance for because it would probably be pretty expensive.
And not to recreate the issue.
Right, I think it's going to recreate the issue, so.
You could.
Yeah, but it would, at least there would be a control factor that Kim could have where she could say only two days a week or limited access for an hour.
It would be, it would, it would be a whole new problem.
Right.
But it would be.
Potentially.
It would, but it would be much more.
Controlled.
Control. It just, I don't know, it would, it would.
I feel like it would be a situation that would be almost like, you know, a weekly, the same thing happening every week, like a program. It would be like a program.
Yes.
With someone that would need to be in there with them.
Right, right.
Is it normally the same kids that come?
It is. And unfortunately, like, the kids that are coming right now are like so good.
Right.
Like, they really are. They're just like, they're, in general, they're a very like sweet, respectful bunch.
Right.
But you never, like, you let your guard down once, there's that one kid or that one group that comes in with the bad mouth or the bad whatever and just.
Can you do something like a warning thing first before taking it away? Because if it is one group of kids, maybe they don't have access to walk where they live together. Some of them might live in Welfleet, others in Orleans. And, you know, to break up a crew of friends could be a little detrimental, but maybe you could do a three strikes and we're pulling this? I don't know.
I know.
And you're trying really hard to, and I.
No, I know.
I give you so much credit for doing this. I just don't want to, if it's just like somewhat the same group of kids that maybe they, this is their little posse and this is their safe space.
No, I know.
You know?
I know.
I don't want to, I don't think it should be in the kids' section, but maybe.
Right. And they do, they, they do play, the thing is, is half the time, they're caught, they're on their phones, sitting at the computers.
Right.
It's a congregation spot.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, they're so drawn towards screens.
Right.
Like, they're, they just are. Like, it's, so my vision for that, and it's, this is just me, it's not my space, it's just more bookshelves, not even another table, because they're going to sit there and play on their phones at that table. They just need to be brought up into the young adult area and they're just going to congregate around their phones. So be it.
Right.
I can't stop what they're doing on their phones.
Right.
So I hope that they're not going to leave the library altogether. They're just going to leave that area.
Right.
And it has to happen by removing the computers.
Right.
I agree. Yeah.
Have you thought about the idea of communicating this message to them after the machines are gone, or maybe before they're gone?
Of course. Oh, my God, I don't, I really hope that we don't just like take them away and they walk in and they're gone. I really hope to have a conversation with these boys before it happens and not blindside them.
And encourage them to keep on coming to the library.
Yes, absolutely. Give them a warning.
Well, can you do a warning though, Kim? Can you do a, hey, this has been a big complaint? This is like, this is just too much.
I think that we're past the point of a warning. I mean, I think that there's been multiple incidents where behavior hasn't been appropriate and it's been going on for a long time.
And we're not necessarily giving the warning to the right kids.
Exactly, it's not.
It's a bit of a mixed bag.
Yeah, because the kids that do come unfortunately aren't doing really anything wrong. It's, and it really, and I would explain that to them, like, and I do, I chit chat with some of them and they're just really, they're good kids. And I would, it's not going to be, they're not going to come in one day and just see them gone. It's going to be a fair warning. It's going to be communicated towards them, for sure.
And that's why we're hoping to perhaps.
Do you want to come up and add anything?
Replace it with something else.
Yeah.
I would just say that we have warned them in the past. We have period, I think this comes up every year with different groups of kids, but we always end up in different situations in the library, having to say, "I'm sorry, this, you know, this is getting too loud. This behavior is inappropriate. You're being warned once, next time you have to leave," or "third time you have to leave." So we have had to interact with them quite a bit, you know, to try and keep tabs on the, keep the behavior under wraps. I think that we're past that point, like you say, Jamie. This has been an issue every year for as long as I've been in the library.
Yeah.
In some different combination of kids, so.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I think that one of the more difficult things is the content of these software games. I mean, there's first-person shooter games that I just really feel like that.
Yeah, it's just not appropriate.
It's not great material that the library is providing. I think that access to that, you know, families have to decide whether children have access to that. And on some level, the library needs to step up and look at it and say, "Is this something that we want to be providing?" One of the things that Kim has tried really hard over the course of the last few months is to substantially increase programming that the middle schoolers will be drawn to. And hopefully that'll help because.
I don't think, Jamie, legally, we went to a meeting that you can restrict access because the ratings are subjective ratings given by the video game industry, not by the government. And so if you start restricting that, you might get into trouble per se about restricting other things. You might, you've been like, just taking.
There's no, there's no ratings in the Roblox system.
Right, there's none, so you can't, but you might just be like, just getting rid of the computers.
Right.
I mean, don't, don't try judging what people are doing.
Right.
That, to me, is unfair thing, but if you just get rid of them.
Yeah.
That's kind of, that's unfortunately where we're at because of the nature of the games. Because you have these games that are being played and then there's two-year-olds watching the games and everyone's like, "Ah, what do we do?"
Right.
And it's just become an inappropriate situation.
But I do think phasing it is very important, discussing it with, with the boys or anybody who's congregating that group is very important and continuing to build, you know, your alliance with them because you see each other almost every day of the week.
Right, right.
It's very important everybody gets along. And I think that, you know, maybe one or two of them could give advice on what they might potentially want to see if another game type setup is purchased.
Yeah.
Although, when you decide what games to buy, you know, I encourage you to go, sort of go middle of the road to start.
Of course, yes, yeah.
Is there no connection to the parents?
No. No, there's, there's not.
Okay.
No.
And I think there's a good chance that if the four machines go, that, you know, there might be a parent who contacts the library and reaches Tavi and.
Yeah.
And then it'll be an interesting, interesting conversation. You know, it's not, it's an issue that we're thinking about from all of our perspectives.
Can you share on this? I had asked Kami and Tavi about the, you know, take these away, what's to stop the kids from going to the other computers? And are, I, I think this is a good idea, a good approach, but are we just shifting the burden on some other staff member to, to police that area instead? Just asking that question.
Well, I think right now there's notes up that say these computers are only for adults.
So if, so if I'm a kid and I want to do, do use the computer for research, where am I to go then?
The idea is that we would have, the library would purchase a Chromebook that, that student could check out with an authorization from a parent and utilize that for research.
And I can have clams and, yeah, okay.
It's, I mean, it's going to be, there's going to be hiccups and it's going to be a little ugly at first. Of course it is. There's going to be, it could not be. It could be completely smooth sailing. The kids are going to argue, they're going to try to use the adult computers at first, but there will be guidelines, there will be signs up. Our thinking is that if we get Chromebooks that are for research and homework purposes only or for doing safe things, that extra step of having to bring home, have your parent come in, sign a permission slip, and then, once that's done, having to come up to the circulation desk and physically ask for it and check it out, that's more social interaction for a middle schooler than they've had all year with any of us. They're not going to do it. They're not going to. And I, you know what? I hope they do. I really, I really do. I hope, I hope they do, but they're not. And they're just going to sit and play with their phones or maybe, heaven forbid, do something else that we provide for them. But they're just, those extra steps, it's too, it's too much for them. That's way too much work rather than just walking over, dropping your backpack and becoming a zombie in front of the computer. So that's kind of our thinking.
What, what are your thoughts, any of the staff members, if some of them migrate upstairs and then they distract or cause extra noise with people trying to do homework there, other students? I mean, would you try and move some of the boys downstairs to the Crane Room if there's nobody in it? Or, I mean, any thoughts?
It tends to be a busy area after school anyway.
So there's conversation?
There's something going on. Yeah, there's conversation. There's backpacks falling on the floor, you know, we're used to that, I think.
Okay.
And it'll just be, just a transition where they will be encouraged to go up there as well. But we have things up there for them. We have games and puzzles. Their collection is up there.
Okay.
It's a natural place for them to be.
Yep. Okay.
Do we have to vote just on it now so they can move forward?
I think we probably should vote.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the report?
I guess my motion would be to approve whatever Kim and Kami want to do.
I'm sorry?
My motion would be to approve whatever Kim and Kami and Tavi want to do because it's their library to run. I trust that they're going to make the right decision.
Do you?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Is there anything in the report that you didn't agree with or anything that? A second?
Pam, second.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? Anybody from the audience want to say anything? All those in favor?
Five.
One, two, three, four, five, zero. Thank you very much for coming in and talking to us.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so we've got the minutes from January 8th to approve. Can I have a motion to approve it?
Motion.
Mark? And a second? Any discussion or changes to the minutes or anything else? Pull the vote? Okay, all those in favor? Five, zero. Great, thank you. Moving on to the trustee chair report, I've got three things that I wanted to touch on. The first thing is Kevin, our liaison to the select board, has graciously engaged in a conversation with the MBLC in regards to the grant that we did not get. And he's in the process of setting up a meeting with Andrea and possibly other staff members to have a further discussion on the criteria and any other questions we may have. We really appreciate the fact that Kevin's had several relatively high-level conversations in state government with people about this grant process, raising the dialogue level. And I'm hopeful that this meeting, which will probably be a Zoom meeting, happens sometime in the next two to three weeks or so. Mark has been very involved in this topic as well. Do you want to say anything, Mark, in regards to this?
Yeah, I, I definitely engaged directly with Andrea and MBLC. I identified myself as a trustee, but I said, "I'm reaching out to you as a, as a taxpayer in Orleans as a private citizen," because I wanted to understand a little bit better about what happened. And that was helpful, both helpful for my education, but also frustrating to hear that. But as I worked my way through this back and forth with her a couple, just a couple times, I then reached out to Hadley Luddy in her new role in the state and to Kevin. And that resulted, I think, to some extent, or it helped in informing their discussions that they might have had at a legislative day a few weeks ago. And I felt, felt good about that. I still, I mean, I was not as closely involved in, in a lot of the discussion that went on early on with the, what we submitted. I did help with writing some of the narrative, but, so I thought, I had, I was missing some pieces of the puzzle. So this was helpful for me to, to be more down in the weeds on it, so. But I still don't quite understand some of the decisions that were made, even though it was clear to everyone else I've talked to who was more closely involved.
Well, I think it's important to keep on asking these questions. I'm not sure that a Zoom meeting will come up with substantial resolution beyond some of what you get when you have an email conversation going back and forth. But I think that it's important to have that dialogue and maybe continue to have some questions that go back and forth electronically afterwards.
Yeah, I think the hardest thing for me has been that despite what early on they said to the group, that you aren't eligible at all. So it's like, so meaning you shouldn't even submit a proposal or a grant application? That, that's, that's what you're saying? And that doesn't seem right?
I don't think, I, I never got that, that we should never submit it. I got it was going to be tough because of our financial rating was very high. And the select board understood that also, that, you know, we had to put our best shot in and above our best shot to even have a chance of getting it. But they never said, "Don't submit it." And we never would have not submitted it because we had to give it our best shot possible. But everyone, I mean, including Kim, understood what that financial rating meant and the finance people did also. And there's nothing we could do. That's how it was set up this year. We couldn't push back because it was agreed to from the very top of the house. So there wasn't anything else we could do.
And I, I feel like this is an opportunity to, after the fact, of course, push back on why that doesn't do a town like ours. I mean, it's a very odd way to evaluate a town and knock it out of the running. And I think the hard part for me is that we weren't even waitlisted. I mean, you couldn't even waitlist us. I mean, I'd be happy to be at the bottom of the waitlist than to be told, "Nope, you're not eligible." Because what that message sends to our fellow citizens in town and taxpayers in town is, you know, okay, there's no money, too bad.
I think the disconnect I had was, they told us we had to prove that we kept the library up, that we didn't let it go into disrepair.
Right.
And we've kept the library up. And we had, we have a lot of volunteers. And we've kept the library up. And we had, we have a lot of volunteers. We're a big friends group. I mean, there's a lot of support for the library. And then to hear them say, "Well, your library's standing and it's not like it's gonna fall down." That, to me, was the opposite of what we were told. So what do you think, Tavi?
Yeah, I think you're, 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 either way, if you let the library go, you're ineligible. And yet, if you keep it up, you might not be in a worse condition than some of the other libraries. So you're kind of stuck. Steve, would you like to add a comment?
Yeah, I would just suggest, using the word eligible is not the right way to talk about this. It wasn't that we were ineligible, it's just we didn't get the grant based on the criteria that were developed, right? If we were the only people to apply, no one else in the state applied.
We would have gotten the grant, right.
So using the word eligibility, the eligibility is, it takes, it gives the wrong connotation to what the issue, I think, is.
Because there, because it changes, right? I mean, it's subjective, right? So if.
It wasn't subjective.
Well, you're right that it changed from the previous round, which was like 10 years ago.
Right.
I mean, you know, like, they revamped the criteria. So that changed, you know, the criteria that we were judged on.
Yes. But then I feel like if, if we didn't meet the criteria and we were the only ones that applied, wouldn't we still be ineligible?
No, no, we, we were eligible. We were always eligible. But what happened was, you fill out this form, the first thing you do is you fill out the financial rating, and they gave us a rating back, which was low, which was like a three. So, for example, if 10 libraries applied and everyone got a score of 80, at the end, they add your financial number onto it. So we would have gotten an 83. We were the second to the lowest. One other got, was like a two. So everyone else was gonna be higher than us, based on that financial rating. But to Steve's point, if three people only end up applying, we would have gotten the grant, because that's the way it was gonna go. So we knew, you know, our application needed to be, get 100. And then we would have gotten at most 103. And everyone else had to get like an 80 or something. We knew we were pushing a big rock uphill.
Yeah.
So that was never a surprise to me, or Steve, it wasn't a surprise to you?
I don't know a lot of the details about the previous criteria versus the current criteria, beyond the fact that, my understanding is that previously, before this new criteria was developed, the wealth of your town really didn't matter.
Didn't matter. It's like getting a grant to redo your sidewalks.
Right.
It wasn't a big criteria. This year, it was a big criteria.
It was way in a way that disadvantaged us.
Right.
And Orleans has gone through a significant economic shift in the last decade, too, since the previous round. Look at homeownership right now.
So, and I would just add that, you know, I think it's fine, you know, it makes sense to try to get as much information from the MBLC as possible. But I don't expect that unless there's a decision to go back to the drawing board to change the criteria for the next round, then I don't imagine our situation is gonna be any different.
I agree.
Aren't there lots of grants and, like the National Endowment for the Humanities and a lot of things like the Brothertown Foundation that gives us money? Aren't there lots of other areas where we can find money?
Not, not for, not millions, I think.
Typically, not for buildings.
Not for a building. Usually it's not for.
Programs is something that's very different, but buildings is, yeah. Buildings are much harder, especially a public facility.
Government-owned building is gonna be really tough.
What's the name of the economic person who's just hired? I forgot her name, who works.
I can't remember.
What's that?
Elizabeth?
Amanda, Amanda Conners. Amanda. So she is the chair of the Hyannis Library System, and they're in the process of trying to secure money. And they're a private library system. And so they've hired somebody to help them try and find pockets of money in other spaces. And it's a completely other, very, very tough, very competitive scenario for buildings. Anybody have any other comments on this topic? Okay, the second thing I wanted to update you on was the video project that we've been working on. Version two of the video was sent out recently, and thank you for all the people. I got a lot of comments back. I combined them in a document and sent that to Charlie about five days ago. And Charlie reported that he's gonna work on it this weekend and have what will be version three done sometime early next week. I feel like that we're getting close to having a final product. The devil's definitely in the details with this, because we want to make sure that everything looks good. You know, we haven't produced, I, I don't know, Tavi, has the library ever produced a video for something before?
No, I don't know.
It's a new production and, but I'm really happy with the fact that the content in the newest version is, really covers the spectrum of what we set out to work on in producing this. Does anybody have any comments on the video before I go on to my last topic? So on January 29th, a group of us met with Kim Newman, the town manager, to discuss the roadmap for the library. I did share a summary document of that meeting with the trustees. It was a very productive conversation. I thought we would be in and out in 15 or 20 minutes, and we met with her for an hour and a half. We covered a full spectrum of topics relative to what the town's engaged with right now. I think she was very interested in laying out, you know, this is what we're dealing with here, this is what we're dealing with here. We went in with a list of questions for her in a written document and provided it to her so that she had a sense of what we were looking for. And essentially, the conversation started with, we didn't get the grant. How do we keep this project, which is really ready to move ahead on the front burner, relative to what you're dealing with in the near, in the near future? The town administrator was very supportive of the library project and wants it to move ahead. She indicated that phase three of the sewer project and the new fire rescue station are two items that will most likely dominate the high-end, high-ask questions for Springtown meeting. She felt that it would be a good fit for us to potentially ask for design money when we get to Fall Town Meeting of this year, which is essentially nine to 10 months away. And she felt that, she was very concerned about some of the changes going on in the economic climate and wanted to see what things looked like over the course of the next couple of months before a final decision was made. But she encouraged us to go back and have a conversation about what we wanted to do. I did get a chance to show her version two of the video, which she enjoyed watching and felt that it was a very nice production and very helpful relative to educating the public. Mark and Tavi, would you like to add anything to what I said, in case I didn't?
Well, I definitely would agree with you. I expected half hour tops and the fact that we were there for that long. And I was very self-conscious, knowing, having just seen the film, I'm just like, is she really gonna want to sit through this? It was our version of the new film that's three and a half hours long. But kidding, kidding. But, so I, I mean, I, I was surprised at how, how much we talked about that. I mean, it was a very good conversation, I thought. I still don't know where I came out of that meeting wrestling with, well, how would I, assuming we're going to be deciding a roadmap at this meeting, where, where do I come down on what is our next step? And I've been really wrestling with that.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but, you know, we just want to keep this conversation going. Tavi, do you have anything to add? I just, I mean, her support for the library was very evident. And I mean, she was talking about what would be the best outcome for having this project be a success. And so I, and then to, just to reiterate what you said, and I mean, and how it fits into also the larger picture and what some of the other potential conflicting issues going on are, so. Yeah. Thanks. I mean, you know, one of the things that she said was, you know, could you potentially go through a process where you would have X amount of money over the course of 10 years to work on renovations? No, I mean, we, we pushed back pretty firmly, saying that that wasn't a route that would really result in an overall improvement. It was, she understands that. She's, she's seeing that, what's going on with the elementary school as well. Anybody else in the audience want to make any comments or? Steve?
So I take it from at least what we understand that at the Spring meeting, that there's gonna be an article of, something in order of $20 to $30 million for the sewer project.
Forty.
Forty.
Yeah, right, forty, I think. And then as much again, if not probably more, for the firehouse? And is that gonna be a design build?
She indicated that it would be.
Sixty for, sixty for the firehouse, if it's, high fifty.
It's gonna be a design build, I ask. Yeah, so like five, five billions, not.
Right. Okay. So that just makes me think, I think, you know, I mean, I'm just thinking of this from a kind of a political standpoint, right, of, you know, what, what's gonna work? Assuming, let's assume the town agrees to fund the firehouse and this next phase of the sewer project, that's a commitment to almost $100 million, right? That's huge. That is really huge. So to think we're gonna come in the fall and say, you know, we want design money in all within kind of the same year, just doesn't resonate with me in terms of how well that's gonna go over, you know, just by delaying it. Now, is it gonna be any better to come in a year's time and ask for it? I don't know. It, it seems to me that, that might be a more practical move, rather than try to, and also, I would really push on going for design build together. And, 'cause I know when we talked about this a few weeks ago, you know, who's gonna wanna spend $4 million, you know, just to come back and say no, you know, to a $40 million project, you know, in six months or another year? Is it gonna all go or not, in my opinion?
Let me respond just to that topic. So we did apply a fair amount of pressure, saying that when we wanted to go, we wanted to go both at the same time.
Yeah.
And she felt that it was really, really important for us to do the design first as a straw poll relative to seeing if there was support for the project at Fall Town Meeting. She felt that it was very, very important for us to get that yes before we went for the much larger ask. And she also felt that going through that design process would help with public input relative to how big a library we wanted to do in the end versus having that all together in one spot. Wait, let me just add one more piece to it. I also did talk to her, we talked to her at length about the issue of whether the library could potentially provide space for some of the town meeting, town hall needs right now. And, you know, she didn't jump at it, but she definitely felt that it was something curious and something to think about.
All right, two things. One, when Steve and I, I think Steve was with, we met with Kim when she first came on, she always does design and build, because the last thing you wanna do is get design money. Or people saying, "Well, I'm not gonna vote for the design, because who knows if the bill's gonna go through."
And then you waste that money.
And then you waste that money. And the old town manager used to just do design first.
Right.
And I feel like if they're doing the firehouse, which doesn't even have a space, as one ask, design and build, we should be the same way. Because if you just put a design number in, you're gonna have to write in the write-up, "It's a $41 million library." I mean, I think it's too much to ask for this year coming up. If we are being asked for $100 million, who knows what's happening in this state of the world? I think it's, it's, the timing is not right now. If we were before the library, before the firehouse, I think we would have had a better shot. If we were able to be in May and the firehouse comes in November. But I think, you know, and I suggested to Jamie, Jamie didn't agree with me, but I know a lot of people that were supporting the library if we got the grant. And I know a lot of people now who are telling me they're not supporting the library. And because of all these other things coming up, the sewer at $40 million is, is a big hit. The firehouse in the 50s is a big hit. And they're, everyone's very cautious now about what's going on in the world. I would have liked to have done a little questionnaire to the friends of the library who were supporters, to say, "Do you still support us building a $40 million library?" And those are our people we'd probably go after to get funding, you know, to get donations from. Because I think otherwise, you know, it's a lot to work on to continue this momentum. And I'm not so sure the momentum's there for this year. I'm in Steve's camp.
Well, I think Steve makes a good point about having some sort of a political setup where Springtown Meeting ends up approving a fire station and saying no to a sewer project. You never know what's gonna get said in this climate.
And then what's saying yes to a library? They say no to the sewer project?
Well, the thing, too, is that the phase three is, is, you know, $40 million for 240 connections. So it's a lot of money to spend for not a lot of connections. And it's, you know, the town really wants to keep that momentum going. Anything else that you're thinking about, Tavi or Mark, relative to that meeting?
Well, one, one thing is I, is, and this has been the case since we first started talking about this several years ago, we have to get that number, $41 million, out of our heads, because it's already old. And by the time we do go to Springtown Meeting, who knows what that figure will be? And, and that, I think, is, also relates to something that Kim said about, "Could you look at the space and cut it down some?" And I did point out, we've only added 9,000 square feet, which sounds like a lot, but yes, we could, but we're, I mean, the price isn't necessarily gonna go down, given that that $41 million is, is now old, so, and the costs are just gonna keep going up. So, yeah, you can cut all you want, but $41 million is no longer that number.
And it was based on the program needs, and they cut it from the original one. I mean, we spent a lot of money doing that.
I mean, I, when I was thinking about, after that conversation, I was thinking about it and thinking actually of all the work Pam has done in the archives room, that, and I didn't go back and look at the plan. Okay, maybe we can cut some there. And, you know, that if, whatever we dedicated to that. And Kim pointed out that, "Well, if we get a community center, then maybe you don't need rooms for the community." And I'm like, well, why wouldn't you have, how, which is coming first, the community center or the library?
I mean, that's another, that's a whole other.
So it's, it's, it's like, and, and I wish there'd been more of a, you know, "Oh, that's a great idea of using the basement space or whatever for town offices or storage or something." And she did sort of, I mean, I jumped on it, I, just because I wanted this not to die. The idea that, yeah, if you, if you want us to be on the campus plan, we'd move. We'd be closer to that, just if we can get the project done, sure. I mean, I think our, our wanting to stay there is, is its prominent location. But it was also, as opposed to coming over here, being over there is close to a lot of what's going on anyway, sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. Not necessarily the best, but I'm just like, yeah, give me the library, I'll, I'll.
And then her response to that was interesting. I mean, she essentially said, you know, "Your library needs to stay where it is, because it's, it's the cornerstone of that segment of the town."
And I love that, who knows?
Tracy or Elaine, would you like to add anything or comment relative to the discussion?
The schools are also gonna be factoring in on this. I don't know if anybody saw the school, elementary school committee meeting on Monday where the program book was presented, but there will be, I would imagine, some negotiating amongst these big asks, library versus school versus community center, number one. And the reason I'm looking at my iPhone is this morning, I don't know if any of you get the weekly newsletter from the APCC, and took in the phrase that they were unable to submit their federal invoices. So we're in very strange times, so I don't know what to say.
I think we let it sit for a while. I don't think we could do anything.
You know, as somebody on the finance committee, you may not have wanted to, I have to sit through and say, "How much debt can this town carry? How much money?" How much money do we get into this town that comes from federal coffers?
Right.
You know, I mean, I think we're pretty fortunate that most of our operating budget is financed by our taxes, you know, like eighty percent tax revenue. But, I mean, I think we have to look at, we've got to be taking care of what we've got until we see how things kind of shake out.
Right.
I think the, one of the hardest things for me is knowing how much time and effort has been put in by a very, very dedicated and hardworking group of people. And that that, as we transition off and out, um, I don't, I don't see in my world the kind of energy that might come to, to support this effort once we are not on the Board of Trustees anymore. And that's sort of sad to me.
I know, but I think we're going to have to wait four years, Mark. I think this is all going to be a tough four years of finances and what gets funded and what doesn't get funded. And if the town has to pick up costs for things they thought the feds were going to cover and things like that. I mean, I just think that I do want a new library. Do we need a new library? Is it critical that it gets done now? No, and, you know, working on projects, I feel bad for the scientists and for the doctors and everyone else that have had these projects pulled out from under them. So, you know, it's a bummer, but I don't, I just, you know, I don't have it in me to push for it right now, because I don't think it's a good push right now. I think we'd be focusing on the wrong thing.
Just a few comments. One, I, I, I understand your concern, you know, Mark, about, you know, who's going to continue on the push, but I would say that's kind of a constant issue though, always trying to recruit for new trustees and be prepared about the library, you know? And that's just something that whoever the chair is, you know, has to work with Tavi to kind of, you know, figure out, you know, where are those people? You know, that just happens all the time, you know?
Sure.
So I wouldn't suggest that there aren't people out there who want to be involved and have a passion, you know, for trying to move things forward as difficult as it is. The other thing is, I can't remember watching the video, did we talk about the grant in the video?
No.
Okay, good. Um, the, the, the idea of waiting a bit, I think, those have the advantage, I think we have what I would call is a very solid plan, essentially, of what the new library should be, right? Plus, it has the potential to totally fit out a basement, which would raise the cost, but would provide advantage to the town. And that would, and we'd have time to talk with the town, you know, about how that could work to their advantage and be incorporated into the plan as well. I mean, I'm as disciplined as anyone as to the current state of things, but everything that's been said is true and, you know, maybe by delaying, you know, we can, you know, provide some momentum to help, you know, Tim Koonenhand push forward with the, um, the tax plan that he has.
Tax, residential taxes.
You know, which I think would be to our benefit, um, as well. And, um, you know, we're just going to keep at it, you know? And it would be, um, I don't think, we want to be in the position where we're pushing things forward without clear support from, you know, the town leadership, you know? I would say though, I think there needs to be more engagement, you know, involvement with the Select Board as well and not, you know, just the town manager and their team.
Sure.
Although I know it's a different regime and whatever, but, um, you know, I do think we do have certainly a handful of, you know, key supporters currently on the Select Board that we should kind of bring into the conversation and help strategize.
I agree. And I think that, you know, when we started having conversations with them, we had a lot of progress to make, uh, four years ago. Um, it's definitely a big change.
I think as good stewards of the town, we should say, we think it's best to step back for the year and wait to see what else happens with the vote in May, a town meeting, and then what's happening fiscally, what happens to the town. Because I think it just shows a leadership that means we're working with the town and we're working with the people in the town to really do what's best versus just pushing it forward because, you know, we lost the grant and we're on a timeline and, you know, I, so we all did work really hard on this, Mark, but I feel like I worked on a lot of things really hard through my career and they get stomped on and dead. And then you say, pick yourself up and go to work the next day. So, I think it, that's sort of what it, it felt like and it's, I think we had a lot of town support and I think we should just let this year go and, you know, just tell them, let's work, let's bring it back next year if the time is right.
And, and I would just add on to that, I think, one thing that I think could be helpful is to, you know, write a, a column or something, or write a piece that pretty much says that, you know? I mean, you know, how disappointed we are in not getting the grant, but understanding, you know, the priorities for the town and the fiscal situation that we're currently in. You know, we, um, we agree, it's not prudent to, you know, I don't know exactly, I don't want to make it up right now, but to state the case, so, and let people know, we're still serious, you know, about this, but we understand that, you know, we're going to have to delay it, you know, unfortunately, you know, for some period of time.
And I also think, Jamie, that, you know, to start fundraising now, when there's so many other things that are not being covered and things that are being cut in critical social service elements, people are looking where they're giving their money to now. I would have a hard time doing a fundraising campaign thinking we were going to raise funds for the building of the library unless we had a yes from the town.
I think one of the things, um, that's important is for us to keep, uh, building our future up so that people can access that information, they can access the feasibility study, they can access the Q and A, they can access the video so that they know that it's a project. I, I agree that waiting does make sense and going for design and build together does make sense.
Does, or doesn't?
Going, does, together. And I also think that just because you aren't a trustee anymore does not mean that you can't come to meetings and talk a lot. And apparently, there's, apparently Steve has a twin brother that we don't know about and he's going to run for trustee the next time around. So, you know, I just don't want, I, I'm okay with the idea of stepping back in terms of some of the key things that we're doing, but I do think that it's very important that we're continuing to educate the public about the declining, um, building and why a new snow library is needed.
Jamie, maybe we could do in a way that we state why we think we should move for the year and take this year to focus on things that are going to be critical, fighting against book bans, highlighting authors that are not, that are being, you know, the deep anti-DI thing, like really focusing heavy on Black History Month, Hispanic History Month, LGBTQ issues, but take a stand, you know? Let's like be the library that we want to go to and support a lot of these efforts that are getting cut right now. And by, you know, a science month, a, you know, focus on things that we could make a difference to people's lives on versus the building, because the building isn't going to happen this year. So, you know, maybe we could look at that, like...
That's a good focus.
Yeah, I just, I, I think that we can do both of those things. You know, I think that we can keep up the exoskeleton of what we've done.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying you can, but in the same time, you could say since we're waiting this time...
Shifting gears.
We're going to now focus on...
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Building a community that feels comfortable in the library and supporting all these efforts and, you know...
And maybe working on developing those priorities is something that you can help us with relative to, you know...
Yeah, and Kayemi and Tommy and the whole staff.
Sure. Um, I'll start working on the skeleton of a piece and working around folks.
Hi.
Shifting gears again, um, now let's go to the financial report. Is there anything that you could add, Tavi, since Sue isn't here?
Sure, we are, we are almost on target for the salaries and the operating expenses. We are down a little bit in both of those categories. In the operating expenses, it's just because of timing situations, and in the salaries, it's because of the vacancies that we have had. And when we get this page position, we will be up to speed on a fully staffed. Everything else is normal with the Friends. Again, if you see a percentage on here that's high, it's because it's front-loaded and that ends up equalling out as the year goes on. And then with all of the revolving funds, everything is pretty much fine. Scanners at circulation we use state aid for, general contributions was about typical of what we get. And then we've been using, and we've been all along using for the concerts, the winter music series, some lectures, we've been using the trust funds. So, everything, everything is where it should be in there. If anyone has any questions.
Okay, great. Questions, anybody, on the financial piece? Okay, thank you. And then your report, if there's nothing else you were going to add, that's great, but Mark and I talked just for a moment before the meeting started, is there a chance that you could just make a couple of comments about the Cummings glass slides and the status?
Sure. So, so right now, what happened was, we had Joel DeMello from the Boston Public Library come, and we thought, and I don't know if he thought at the time as well, that he was going to come and we were going to help him, you know, load the glass plate negatives in his vehicle. I'm going to get my coat and help him do it. Um, and then when we started having the conversation about, you know, what was there and what we had, it, the likelihood of that kept seeming less and less. And so, essentially what has to happen is, a new numbering system has to be devised for them so that it makes some sense. And that way, there's another check to make sure that what is on the glass plate negatives matches what is on those spreadsheets, so that when they go to, when the catalogers go to digitize it, they can just go through and just be doing these things without having to stop and check everything, so.
Do you have money to do that? Have someone catalog it?
It's not so much that, it's actually just, he wants it, you know, right now, there's like sixty-one, sixty-one A, um, and then skips to sixty-seven, and he just wants one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, so...
How many do we have?
Close to a thousand.
Oh, my gosh.
But, and then there's a group of three boxes of, of glass plate negatives that were never rehoused, that we assume may be duplicative of what has already been rehoused, but we don't know. You have to handle them in a very special way. We may just set that aside, I think, but we'll do some preliminary investigation, but it's the renumbering. So it's not horrendous to do that, it's just going to be time consuming and tedious, because I think probably, I am, I came up with the project, so I'm going to, yeah, of course you have to have a number two pencil and not write very heavily, um, and, um, just having the spreadsheet and then associating that with, you know, sixty-one A is now number one.
So you're going to do...
I could help you with that.
So, that, yeah, so that, it'll be, it's, I think it's a two, definitely a two-person job, um, to just go through and make sure...
So I don't have to do the computer part.
Right. I mean, thankfully, like, in pencil on each jacket that houses the glass plate negative, it says cows standing in field, so hopefully that matches what's in...
It's actually in there.
Yeah.
And then he's going to take them all once you're done?
Yeah.
And then he scans them and then when you don't, we just, he keeps the originals?
No, they would come back to us. It, I mean, we, we sort of asked without asking that question about, for, for, while the objects themselves are interesting, they are, and they're in the right kind of housing now and thing, and they don't get used or touched or anything like this, they do disintegrate all the time. But they're in the best kind of containment now. But we, in theory, once they're digitized, don't really need them, but we're not getting rid of them, but it, it's like, getting them digitized is the really most important thing to do, so...
That's good, that's a big one.
The way it is right now, you know, when we bring people up to take a look at the booklets and they're going through, there's no sequence to the numbers. It's like eighteen, thirty-one, forty-five, they're, and people will ask you, well, what is the numbering system here? And it's embarrassing, especially as librarians, to say, oh, well, it's just a random number system, we don't really know how it was devised. I mean, that, it would be the equivalent of us saying, well, we don't really have a numbering system for where all the books are in the library, you just have to kind of wander around the shelves and, and see if you can find it. So, I mean, something like, a new numbering system is, is vital.
That's good news. So when the, when those booklets were set up, were they set up by topical area?
We, yes, the, the, the booklets are done by topical area, but again, how the numbers came to be is anyone's guess.
Because you inherited these all like this.
Yes. And my predecessor inherited all of them, and you just, so it's gone so far back that we don't know. I'm sure there was a reason for the numbers, why one is eighteen rather than some other number, but, you know, we don't know.
When you go to do the numbering system, are you going to do it by topic or are you just going to do it by...
No, they want one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay.
And going forward.
No, but in your mind, as you're doing them, you know, is it going to be...
All the cows are one, two, six, ten.
All the fishing shots?
Oh, no, 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 it's as they're, as they are in their housed boxes now, it will be one, two, three, four, five, six, no. I, assuming, assuming that, you know, this gets off the ground and things, yes, I'd like to get to those binders and redo them, but that will be almost, at least, they won't be disintegrating in front of me, but that is a lot of moving pieces, because for each, there's the photograph and then there's the little card in another sleeve that says number six, eighteen, cows standing in meadow. So you have to take those out and if they're number one, great, but then you have to look through all the binders to find number two to put them in order that way, so, um, it's a nightmare.
What, what do you think about the idea of applying for a CPC grant so that there's...
Next year, instead of this year.
Oh, come on, don't we know somebody involved with this process?
An archivist? You mean an archivist to do that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'll take that, I'll take that under advisement, yes.
That's true. And Mary, who did the, um, that's a museum, the Cable Museum, she did a phenomenal job of archiving. She has, Mary, I can't remember Mary's last name, her and husband have a business that does archival work, and they're the ones that did it for Cho, and they did it for the museum, the Cable Museum.
Was it, is it Mary Hartford?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Do you know how much they spent?
I don't, I don't remember, but she's right in town and I'm sure she can come over and talk to you, I mean...
Would you say Hartford?
Hartford.
Yeah, Hartford.
Hartford, yeah.
I mean, for, for this project to get them digitized, just renumbering, which is not a huge thing for the rest of it.
But then for the rest, you could talk to her and you could see what, she would charge, and then you can apply for CPC grant to get it next year.
I mean, the problem with the subject matter is to, like, your subject is always difficult because where do you put some of the photos? Like, they might fit in different subjects, and so that's, and whenever you have any kind of subject category, it's hard to choose, and so you usually have to have more than one and have a C also reference for, like, it might also be in here, to try to figure out, you know, how people would think about it as to what subject.
And do you think, I haven't even looked at the binders this way, do you think it's possible that if there's one with, with, I think there's category boats or whaling or something?
Yeah.
And shipwrecks.
Shipwrecks.
And then people, isn't it possible that they could have put the same picture in both binders just as an antiquated way of cross-referencing? Do you think it's possible?
I don't think there are double photos in there, I don't think there are, because when I've looked and I've managed to find them, it's usually one mention, it's like in this volume.
Thanks so much. I'm turning to report of the...
Tavi wasn't done.
Tracy.
No, Tavi has something else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have, just in addition to my written report, Mark had mentioned about... I just have, it just, in addition to my written report, um, Mark had mentioned about, we saw an email about, uh, it's National Library Lovers' Month, you know, Love My Library Project. So, um, Kaimee has set it up, and we thought it's very appropriate for February for Valentine's Day. And so originally, we were going to do, like we have before, an easel and have a Post-it board on there. The problem is, that's unsteady with people putting little sticky notes on there. So it's one of our bulletin boards right next to the copier, and I have, uh, Kaimee did this, did the poster, bought the heart-shaped Post-it notes, and designed a little library here, and so I printed this out, she took the photo, and I'll, I'll pass this around to you to see what it is, and so people have already started putting little, uh, Post-it notes there.
Oh, that's great.
Very nice. Do you wanna die?
You don't want people to say how much they like the small locker.
My cozy home.
Aw, that's cute.
It's nice to have something positive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's why I wanted to mention that, print that out and mention it.
Great. Thanks, Tavi. Okay, Tracy, what do you got?
Okay, so, um, so our financials for the period of July to December twenty twenty-four, our gross profit was about ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars, I don't wanna say that. Total contributions to the library were about thirty-three thousand, five hundred for that time period. Our total operating expenses were nineteen thousand dollars, and our net income was about forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, which is comparable to last year at this time, having no big expenses like the internet stuff, like time learning. Um, our financial advisory committee met with our investment team at Cape Cod Five on January fifteenth for our quarterly investment portfolio review, and after some discussion, we decided to close our socially responsible investment account and move the remaining funds, we've been kind of shifting it over time, removing those funds to our main investment account where they would be earning more money. When we started that socially responsible investment account, we continually compared it to the main investment account, they always did that for us, and we started off really losing money, and we were starting to catch up, but we decided to, you know, especially thinking about new library and things like that, it would make more sense to make the most money that we could. Lifetime learning registration is now open to the public with classes beginning on February twenty-fourth. Gallery hopping, which has three sessions in April, is the only class which is limited to thirty people, so if anybody wants to get into gallery hopping, register today or tomorrow. Other than that, you know, it's wide open. And did you?
I have to, good.
You still have to do, okay. And the other thing I wanted to mention was the Bretherton Charitable Foundation funds that we still have remaining that didn't get spent on the storyteller series. Singer-songwriter David Roth, who performed this summer, is going to be providing a songwriting workshop on February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for fourth graders at Orleans Elementary School. The students will write lyrics with David to a song, they'll put it to music, and then they're gonna sing the song and play the song on their ukuleles, because they study ukulele in fourth grade. So that's gonna be very interesting. And the other remaining monies, Kim O'Clare is in the process of choosing two children's authors to come visit the library sometime in the next few months. And that's all I got.
Any questions for Tracy, anybody? Okay.
I have one, I have an update.
Sure.
Okay, um, so this is an update, because the library's involved and so is the Crane Room. Um, in June, there is going to be a Lower Cape Pride event happening, it's June thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, and, uh, my husband and I are very involved. So there is gonna be a parade, um, in the morning, and then there's gonna be a day of afternoon programming over at Cape Giraffe. It's all volunteer, it's all grassroots, and we have gotten a lot of support so far, the town has been very supportive. Uh, Kaimee has been working with Rick on what can happen in the library, we will have, the Crane Room will be a, um, works from the LGBTQ plus community and they're allies, so every, anyone might be invited, and we're curating that now. Um, there will be books up about these topics and, um, maybe some other, um, programming or talks or things like that at the library for that day, so I just wanted to let everyone know that, and.
What was the date?
It's the Lower, we're calling it the Lower Cape Pride, oh, June fourteenth. We're calling it Lower Cape Pride, although it's really from Eastham, includes Brewster, and, um, we actually, we submitted for a grant for the Cape Cod Five and one up in Provincetown, which you can get a grant, and they're calling it the Outer Cape in Orleans, it's part of the Outer Cape for them, which is fine, so that's what's happening.
And, and I also reserve the Saturday before the seventh, because, um, Rick at the Crane Gallery meeting had suggested that maybe with all the events going on there, that there might wanna be a week before where they could have, like, the reception.
Right.
The art reception, so it wouldn't be competing with other events going on, because that's gonna be a busy weekend with a lot of stuff going on.
And we have like thirty-six people on the core team, and half of them are under the age of thirty, which is really great, and, um, I don't know if everyone knows, but in this community, um, the two women who were the part of the lawsuit to be able to get married live in Orleans, they've been married for fifty-four years, Lyndra and Gloria Bailey's, Davis Bailey, um, which is really pretty amazing, and we also have two men who are at Stonewall who are married, um, and we also have someone who's on the library board who had to, um, he and his husband got married, worked for Bank for America, and Bank for America said they didn't have to give him health coverage because Bank for America was not based in Massachusetts, and he sued and he won. So we have some really groundbreaking people who live in Orleans, and, um, it's really important, especially now, and we, we started this before, all this, but really important to get the town behind this sort of program.
That's great, thank you.
I'm coming to your meeting on the twentieth.
Okay.
Jamie will be coming next.
Great. Thanks for letting me know.
Wait, where do I put, is that going in?
No, no. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Oh, could I?
Second.
Sorry. What, if anything, do we need to do to drum up support for any upcoming elections to the Board of Trustees?
I didn't have it on the agenda as a topic of discussion, but it's something that we can talk about.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Can I second it now?
Yeah, all in favor? Thank you so much.